Good evening, everyone. I would like to call the April 23rd, 2024 Planning Commission regular meeting to order. The Planning Commission is holding hybrid meetings. Members of the public can attend the meeting in person or observe the meeting on Zoom online by visiting www.cityofarcada.org and following the live meetings link at the bottom of the city's homepage or on the city's YouTube channel. If you are attending remotely, please be aware that the Zoom feed provides the closest-to-real-time stream. If you rely on the other feeds and you wish to make comments, please be aware of the time lag on those feeds. The first item on our agenda is the land acknowledgement. The City of Arcata acknowledges that the lands we are located on are the unceded ancestral lands of the Wiat tribe. The land that Arcata rests on is known in the Wiat language as "gudene," meaning "over in the woods" or "among the redwoods." Past actions by local, state, and federal governments removed the Wiat and other indigenous peoples from the land and threatened to destroy their cultural practices. The City of Arcata acknowledges the Wiat community, their elders, both past and present, as well as future generations. This acknowledgement seeks to aid in dismantling the legacy narratives of settler colonialism. Staff, will you please call roll?
Commissioner Strickland?
Present.
Commissioner Yodowitz?
Here.
Commissioner Lehman?
Here.
Commissioner Smith?
Here.
And Chair Davies?
Here.
And we are joined this evening by Community Development Director David Loyah and Senior Planner Joe Matier. Next, we have oral communications. During this time, people may make comments about items that are not on the agenda. If you wish to speak on one of our agenda items, you will have an opportunity when we are discussing those items. If you have comments about items that are not listed on our agenda this evening, please line up now behind the lectern. If you are on Zoom and you wish to make comments on matters that are not on today's agenda, please raise your hand by selecting the Raise Hand icon on the right side of your screen or by pressing *9 on your phone. The clerk will unmute you when it is your turn to speak. With that, I'd like to open Public Comment. Each speaker will have three minutes' comment during early oral communications. Feel free to state your name for the record. Can we pause the time real quick? You know, test it again, Gregory?
Testing. Hello? One sec.
You've done this before, haven't you? After a little technical stumble, we are ready for early oral communications. Fire away.
Okay. Going back to that annual report from a number of weeks ago, you know, I addressed that the noise element was not being addressed for the last couple of years. You've received letters, and of course, gazillions of times that have come up between the Planning Commission and the City Council. I spoke with our city manager after the meeting last week, and I was kind of surprised because I've been asking for data on the police as far as how many stops they make for speeding, you know, noise element. And I never had an answer, a definite answer. It was just a vague number of how many stops that we got a few weeks ago. So she was very honest with me, so I appreciate that she was honest about that, but there hasn't been anything. There hasn't been one single individual of, you know, our F-16s going through the streets here at all nights. And I was kind of surprised that there is not going to be any enforcement in the future. And the reason was because we're really spending our money on the homeless issue. So I just wanted to make sure that's clear. And also, from the standpoint of, you know, even something like our air, which according to our EIR, that's the most significant, I mean, I question how even can come up with that conclusion. I'm not disputing that conclusion, but there's no testing of, you know, here in Humboldt County, from the standpoint of our diesel trucks that are on the streets, small diesel trucks, not the commercial. And also, our passengers' cars, there's no testing, like most of California, you know, when you want to go to the DMV and renew your car, you know, you have to get it through the smog. So I would really suggest that we spend a little bit more than 90 seconds on some of these important elements, because I really think you're just, like, pushing this through. And, you know, this has been my observation, and, you know, I've been trying to get data on it to, like, back up what I'm saying, just my observation on the streets. And it seems like the data is backing up what I have to say about this issue. So it's, I mean, even on the safety element, there's, I mean, there's so many cars at speed, I mean, I've never got an answer on the question, does anybody ever get a ticket, you know? So there's a lot of research. I suppose I could send you an article from the New York Times that addressed why is the U.S. so dangerous compared to Europe and Canada and Australia. Well, I'll give you a hint. There tend to be a little bit more enforcement, you know, with their equipment. In Europe, it was the standpoint that they had manual cars, so nobody was, like, driving around with their cell phones. So there are some other things going on. It's not just bicycle lanes. I mean, that's great. I support the bicycle lanes. But according to even this, we have the highest statistics in Humboldt County in all of the United States as far as DUI fatalities. So I think that's a little indication right there. Thank you.
Gazillions or no, we always appreciate your comments. Thank you, Gregory. Good evening, Fred.
Good evening. I'm Fred Wise with arcata1.com. In the last year, the first half of 2023, Commission had a full, packed agenda for each meeting. Each meeting had items that you carried over to the next meeting, because you had so much to do. Pretty much starting with the first meeting of this year, January 9th, your agendas have been much less full. First meeting of January 9th was finished in one hour and one minute. The next meeting was finished in one hour and 31 minutes. Meeting two weeks ago was one hour and 42 minutes. Your average for 2024 has been a little over two hours, two hours and two minutes. Commission finds itself in a position, from my point of view, there's lots of work which has not been done. I'll talk more about what I regard as the inadequacies of the current draft Gateway Code when we get to that agenda item. But from my point of view, and I think the public's, Commission is not utilizing its time efficiently. In 2023, you did. 2024, you're not. Next item, I believe you have received the letter from the Board of Directors of the Arcata Fire District. They've said in formal terms what they've been saying for two years. Quote, "Until funding is established and district expansion is underway, we believe it would be imprudent to approve building permits and begin occupancy in the envisioned residential buildings." Just referring to buildings that are above 40 feet, three stories. This doesn't mean the buildings can't be built. It just means that the Arcata Fire District is not willing to say that they can supply safety and emergency services to them. I have been optimistic about this. I think funding is going to come from the state, but it's still a two-, three-, or four-year cycle to get the equipment and personnel in place. Next, the arcata1.com has, you've received the comments and suggestions for the Gateway Code. We'll talk about that later. There's been over 530 views on that article. There's been 670 views of the Gateway Code itself. These are large numbers for my little website. It seems that people are interested. I regard this stuff, it's very technical and dry, but people are reading it. Thanks.
Thanks for your comments. Does anybody else here with us in the gallery like to comment on items not on our agenda this evening? Not seeing anyone? Do we have any hovering online waiting to weigh in? All right. Thank you all for your comments. We always appreciate your participation and input. We will now move to item three, which is our consent calendar, and we have two items on consent this evening. The first item is to approve Planning Commission meetings from our regular meeting, April 9th, 2024. Would anyone like to pull the item off of consent, or do we have a motion?
I'll move to approve that consent calendar.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Excuse me, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Thank you for that. Let's see, actually, that was our sole consent calendar item this evening. We will move now to public hearings. And we have one public hearing before us this evening, which is to approve design review and sign permits for Ahmad facade improvements at 764 Ninth Street. And first off, I just want to check and see if any commissioners have any expertise to disclose.
Yes, I do, Chair. I have an ownership interest in Carriage House, which is a restaurant that's, I don't know, 700 to 900 feet from the applicant's property. And under the relevant FPPC regulations, it's not entirely clear whether I have a conflict of interest or not because of that, but I'm going to err on the side of being conservative and recuse myself.
Okay. Thank you for that. Joel, appreciate it. We will wait for you to get in the back room and continue our discussion. Okay. Can we begin this evening with?
I have expertise, I think.
Okay.
Okay. Just in reference to this project, I was curious about whether or not the address itself would be able to be approved for a liquor license, because at one point I heard there was a moratorium on that location. So I did email ABC to ask that question about their policy, and they did say that there would be no moratorium for this location.
Thank you. Appreciate that. As such, can we please begin with a staff report this evening?
Yes, good evening, Planning Commission. My name is Joe Matier, Senior Planner with the city. I'm the signed planner for the project for you this evening. It's a design review and sign permit for the renovation of an existing commercial space that is currently vacant on the Arcata Plaza. It's a historic district, so any of the exterior alterations will come before the Planning Commission at this time. The staff report has an action, and we recommend that the Planning Commission consider that action and approve the design review as submitted with the signed permit, first of all, by adopting the California Environmental Equality Act, Class 1, 15301, Existing Facilities, Environmental Review Exemption, and then adopting the action that you'll find is Attachment A of your staff report. That action includes Exhibit 1, the findings of approval, Exhibit 2, the conditions of approval, and it's based on the plans as submitted as Exhibit 3. Here's an image of the plaza in the center. The parcel is the blue rectangle on the north side of Ninth Street. The purple outline is the Arcata Plaza itself, the plaza area, combining zone. And the district goes a little bit beyond, no, that's actually the historic district. I apologize for that. That is the line of the historic district. And so it's on Ninth Street on the north side of the plaza. It's a former bar known as Toby and Jack's that was closed down. It's been for a number of years now. There have been some renovations with other buildings and properties in the Arcata Plaza. So we certainly appreciate the new owner coming in and investing in our community with not only new facade improvements, but a new land use activity as well. So here's a picture of the, this is a 2017 image of the facade. The application did not include any of the existing exterior alteration, or exterior of the building. But here we have kind of a vertical siding with the brick there. We do have some existing sign areas here. It's a single-story building. It's close to a 25-foot-wide lot that goes all the way back to the alley. The improvements that they're proposing include new, they're going to remove the existing siding on the building and put a hardy material over it, paint it white. And then there's going to have these patterns that are going to be nailed on top of that material. They'll be white. They're going to keep the existing brick facade here, clean that up, paint it white. There'll be two new commercial storefront doors, I mean, windows here on this side, and then over here on the west side of it, also a new door. They'll just go ahead and repair and fix and paint the canopy overhang that is over the door itself. We have a small menu sign here. The sign is about four by eight, just a little less than that. It will be backlit sign, and I have some more information on that itself. So there'll be some black trim, white, this pattern, I do have some more information on that as well. And then they're going to, on the, here's the pattern itself. It has the computer cut, either a high-end plywood or a hardy panel that will be just laid over the new hardy panel that will be underneath there. It'll all be primed and painted. And so the, it's a different style. Definitely it will add some unique patterns, shadows, and texture to that. It will definitely bring life to the kind of tire Here's the image of the sign itself. It's cut out, it'll be metal, letters, there'll be backlit with a red LED light. And then it will be attached, so it's, it kind of floats above the panel, the siding on that. And over here is kind of a little example of another backlit sign. This particular sign, I don't know that came with it, you do see some of the wires and everything, and we do have a condition of approval to make sure that none of those wires are exposed and that they're hidden behind the wall panel itself. This is a view of the elevation from the rear alley. They'll do the same kind of pattern in the rear portion of the building. And then they'll have an eight-foot-high cedar fence, horizontal boards, painted black with a small door here. Part of this area right now has existing parking. It's one of the few parcels on the plaza on the north side. It's actually the only one that has, on that half of the block, that has a few parking spaces. So right now, it's kind of an open, vehicles could come in and park there. After this is placed about three feet from the alley property line, that parking would be removed. There'll be some outdoor seating area, and this eight-foot screening is intended to provide that privacy for that outdoor dining experience. We have the findings of approval as Exhibit 1, and they include the design review and sign permit. It's in compliance with the general plan and the land use code. And then also, we have the environmental review finding for the California Environmental Quality Act, Existing Facilities Exemption. The conditions of approval, there, some of the ones that are specific to this project would be the screen mechanical equipment. Right now, a lot of times, there'll be some rooftop mechanical equipment associated with the restaurant, mainly kind of hood vents. There's exhaust of fumes coming from the inside, and then new intake ones as well. And so we want to screen those as much as possible. And the conditions of approval kind of identify what the protocol for that screening would be. Because we, certainly, if somebody is on another building, looking down on that, that is taller, we wouldn't be able to screen that. But really, it's from somebody that would be on a farmer's market on the street, would they be able to see that mechanical equipment and try to, try to screen that as much as possible? Oftentimes, the project designs, in my experience, working, you know, almost 30 years in doing this, is the, a lot of that is a last thought. You know, it's like, oh, we need to put this mechanical equipment on there, and so they plop it on there, and we have this nice building facade with a bump on the log there. So we want to try to avoid that as much as possible, because the plaza is one of our key downtown areas, what we have for commerce and public gathering spaces. It is an older building, so we want to make sure that any unused or necessary wires, utility boxes, or any of that stuff is removed and cleaned up. As, you know, as they're going through that and redoing the building, let's go ahead and remove and try to go ahead and run wires and things like that that are commonly together and stuff like that. There is a condition to require dimmable outdoor lighting and for the sign itself. Because of the plaza and the red light that is with that backlit sign, we wanted to make sure that we had an intensity that does provide the purpose for the sign, providing attention to that, but not having one that is overbearing. We don't want, our sign code does prohibit flashing, blinking signs and such like that, so we want to make sure that that outdoor lighting and the sign have dimmable opportunities to, hey, look, this is intense, let's tone that down a little bit. And then the professional design of the sign itself, some of the experiences we've had is that signs, they may look great on a piece of paper, but they do not function once they get out on the field. And so being that it does look like a high-quality sign, we want to make sure that it is designed by a professional, that it has experience with that, and the materials and quality of the material can withstand over time there. And then one to maintain the property. It has been, the property was, been vacant for several years now, and there is an attraction because of the loss of people inside the building and stuff like that. So we added a condition just to make sure that the property is kind of maintained over time as well. With that, again, just kind of go through the action. We recommend you approve that by adopting the Sequoie exemption, and then the action that includes the findings and conditions of approval based on the application material and the conditions. Staff is happy to answer any questions the Commission may have. Thank you.
Thanks very much for that presentation. I want to just check in and see if any commissioners have questions about the staff report before we turn it over to public comment. Any questions for staff? Okay. Seeing none, we will open the public comment period. The applicant will have the first opportunity to speak, to present their project. As per usual, the applicant's presentation will not be timed. After the applicant, members of the public will each have up to three minutes to provide comments on the project. The applicant will have an opportunity to respond to public comments at the end. If you are in person, please feel free to line up at the lectern after the applicant's presentation. If you are on Zoom, please raise your hand by selecting the Raise Hand icon on the right side of your screen or by pressing *9 on your phone. The clerk will unmute you when it is your turn to speak. Feel free to state your name for the record. I'd now like to invite the applicant to speak to the project.
I worked on the application. I don't think that the applicant necessarily has any presentation for the Commission.
Oh, okay.
We do have representatives here if the Commission has any questions. Is that correct? Okay, I get affirmative nod on that.
Okay, great. Then we will skip, I suppose, straight to public comment if anyone would like to comment on this project. Now is your moment.
Okay. I would support this project. The existing building, you know, it's not going to win any Architectural Digest awards. You can't really go wrong with doing whatever. And so, and it's been vacant for a while, so it's, you know, some issues around it. I'd point out, kind of the interesting thing is the pattern, which is, the pattern is an old Moorish design that I've been to Granada, Spain, the Alhambra, which is a pretty famous palace that the Moors set up. And so that pattern is generally terracotta with bright colors, copper, blues, whites. So at first, when I saw it, I thought, well, are they going to, are they going to be doing that? Sounds like they're doing kind of like a monochrome technique with just, probably because of the cost and everything involved. But it would have been interesting to see it kind of from the historical standpoint with color on it, but, you know, I wouldn't mandate that. So, but it's a design that's been around. I mean, you see it in Seville, Spain, you've seen it in the great mosque of Cordoba, but it's generally on the wall, but very, very bright colors and, you know, they do, they're all individual pieces, all the sections there, and they come together as a mosaic. So, but overall, yeah, I would, I would look forward to having something happen at that site. I'm glad that there's somebody who's willing to invest in, on the plaza when, you know, I go for night walks and see a lot of issues with the plaza, with people breaking windows and things. So I'm happy when someone's coming forward that wants to make the capital investment and have a dream and go for it. And so I, I'm for it.
Thank you for your comments.
Yes, good evening, Commissioners. I have no issue with the project, just some comments. First, the rear has an eight-foot fence that seems tall. That perimeter there around this room seems about eight feet. So there's a question of whether the fence really does need to be that tall and whether that's a good height for the alley there, what the ruling is. Small comment for the applicant, the fence is specified as one-by-eight cedar. I assume that it's on three or four foot centers. I don't think one-by-eight cedar is going to hold up too long. I think it'll get kicked in, and I suggest two-by-eight material. Next, can we look at page 17 of the packet? Call that up. This is not a comment on the project. The staff report contains a copy of the property report for this parcel. Can we look at that?
Would the Chair like me to pull that up?
On page 17?
Sure.
It's the parcel image there. Okay. The, what we're seeing here is standard. Staff hasn't done anything wrong, but the aerial views that we get are skewed. They're not accurate. You can see the building and the property lines don't coincide. In the next agenda item, this is a larger issue, as we'll see. Using the layers of the city's JS system, this could be set up to match up more closely. I think once it's set up, it would just take a few extra minutes to get more accurate images. It's a small item, but I don't know what the people at home can see, but as you can see, the property lines don't match up with the buildings at all. In some cases, it's worse than others. And it's also not uniform, as you'll see in the next, next agenda item. Thanks.
Thanks for your comment. Anybody else in the gallery here this evening care to share their thoughts? Anybody else in the gallery here this evening care to share their thoughts? Anybody online? Okay. Appreciate everyone's comments. I'd like to bring this discussion back to the commission now. Does anyone wish to ask questions, make statements, or perhaps offer a motion? Melissa?
Yeah, I have a question. I think it's more for the applicant or the applicant's agent rather than staff. The sign, I'm super, again, happy that this is going to be occupied and I do like the design of the sign. My concern with the sign is that there is a condition in the report stating that the lighting will have to be dark sky compliant. And this sign is backlit and there's no awning above it. There's a few factors with dark sky compliance. And one of them has to do with light trespass upward towards the sky. And so, given the current design, this would allow light trespass upward. There is an argument to be made that red light is less damaging towards migratory bird species. And there's two other factors with dark sky compliance. It also deals with color tone as well as wattage. So, it feels like this design or this sign maybe deals with two of the three factors of dark sky compliance, but doesn't look at light trespass upward, which, in my opinion, could be one of the more important ones. So, I'm just curious how the applicant is planning on addressing that.
So, looking at that, that sign with the backlight, red light is, it actually transmits, it doesn't transmit as far as other colors of light. So, for vertical light transmitting, there actually would be less than if it was a different color. And if there's an accepted method of, you know, testing the luminance at a certain distance, that's something we could look at doing.
Yeah, typically with dark sky compliance, they would just say, make it shielded or recessed. And I think recessed isn't an option here. So, I mean, if during the building permit process, they said to be dark sky compliant, you'd have to shield it, would that be something you'd be willing to do?
I think the, you know, I think it's less than ideal for this design. But again, it's, it's a thing of, if you look at how red light actually transmits, a white light with a sconce on it that's pointing down, it's probably going to bounce more light off the ground and reflect that upwards than a sign like that with an LED light that's not, not super bright, reflecting off a wall like that.
Go ahead, Peter.
I agree, excuse me, I agree with the applicant. I think a modest red light is really not going to affect the dark sky.
Abby?
Yeah, I am appreciative of the special condition requiring that it be dimmable. And so, I don't really have any qualms with the lighting. And like it says in the special conditions, if it's not compliant, then the applicant's required to adhere to that. So, I did have two other comments. One, just thanking staff and the applicant for putting together a nice application. I did notice that project-specific condition 1B just has a typo at the end, like a sentence was about to start, but then maybe got deleted. So, just that one item. Otherwise, I'm looking forward to approving this.
Yeah, I feel as well that the requirement to make it dimmable addresses that. Would anyone, any further discussion or does someone want to make a motion?
I move that we approve the design review and sign permits. We adopt the SEQA review exemption and that we approve the conditions, the findings, and the plans.
Second.
You have a motion and a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes, congratulations. Okay, appreciate everyone's help and work on that. We're moving on to business items. Oh, that's right, Joel, thank you. This evening, our first business item is to adopt Resolution PC 2404, finding the acquisition of a public access easement over a portion of APN's 505121034 and 505121031 in conformance with the general plan. Can we begin, please, with the staff report?
Yeah, I will keep it brief and leave it to your questions to get into any additional detail. This is the culmination of a project that was approved by the Planning Commission quite some time ago for the Open Door Health Center. And part of the conditions of approval for that project were to dedicate a trail easement through the property to allow non-vehicular access. And this actually ties back to requirements that dated back into the original general plan 2020. And so, this is the culmination of a lot of planning and thinking around this trail. It would allow for pedestrians and bikes to, you know, to transit north-south in between those two properties. Staff has reviewed it and finds it in compliance with the general plan. And we'd recommend that the Planning Commission do so also by adopting the resolution. That would be forwarded to the city council for their consideration for accepting that easement.
Perfect, thank you. This seems pretty straightforward from how I'm reading it. Are there any questions from commissioners, from staff, before we roll to public comment? Okay, I'm going to open public comment. If you're in person, please feel free to line up at the lectern. If you are on Zoom, please raise your hand by selecting the raise hand icon on the right side of your screen or by pressing star nine on your phone. The clerk will unmute you when it is your turn to speak. Feel free to state your name for the record. Fred, fire away.
First, I want to congratulate those persons who had the foresight to require this easement at this location. If it was the Director of Environmental Services, Emily Sinkhorn, please acknowledge this and thank you for this pathway. It's in a good location. I don't know if the commissioners are encouraged or discouraged from visiting a site. I have visited the site. The path is complete at this point. It's well-done. It has multiple steps. It's not a bike path, it's a pedestrian path, although I suppose kids on bike will go anywhere. Can we look at page, packet page 25? Because I want to show the imagery on this.
I don't believe we have that up right now. Do you?
Okay.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Okay. It shows, I'll use my hands. It shows the distance between the existing apartments and the new Open Door Clinic building as being a foot or two apart, which clearly is not true. I went there, it's about 15 feet. And it's because of the angle that the aerial photograph is done. And the image shows the easement as going through the building. So, it's, again, it doesn't matter. I mean, we know where the easement is, it's not going through a building. But I think with a little work, it could be, we could have a more accurate image. That's it. Thanks. And again, if the community director can say who's responsible for this, I thank that this is the kind of stuff that is good to have. Thanks.
Thanks for your comments. Anybody else care to speak to this agenda item? Anybody online? No, already.
There's no one online, but I do want to draw your attention to the environmental review section on packet page 22. I had provided some feedback to the drafter of this and there was maybe a little miscommunication. I just wanted to identify for the commission and the public that the second paragraph there, this project is categorically excluded. I want you to strike that from your minds. This has nothing to do with a categorical exclusion. The project had a full EIR and the acceptance of the easement was contained within that EIR. You are not taking action today on a SEQA exemption. And so, I would like to make the additional change that in your Resolution PC 2404 on packet page 23, instead of the language that you find under the Resolution Bullet Number 1, that be stricken and replaced with the language that is in the first paragraph in the environmental review. Does that make sense? Just stating that this was subject to a, an EIR.
Got it. Appreciate the clarification. Any questions? Comments? We have no one online, so additional comments or a motion, if there are none?
I'd like to move that we adopt Resolution Number PC 2404 with a modification that paragraph one, under the, now therefore be it resolved, be eliminated and replaced by the paragraph on page 22 of our packet under environmental review, that be, the paragraph that begins, "The trail construction and dedication was contemplated in the environmental impact report," et cetera.
I'll second the motion.
We have a motion and a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Thank you for your help with that. We are on to our next item this evening under business items. And this is to review and provide direction on the gateway code. And I would like to begin, as always, with a staff report, please.
Yeah, thank you, Chair Davies. The Planning Commission will be reviewing a recommendation, formal recommendation, to the city council regarding the general plan, including the gateway, gateway plan and the gateway code at your next meeting. That notice has gone out and we'll have that prepared for your review. We've just spent a lot of time in the last year or so, really doing a deep dive on the general plan. And it's been a while since we've looked at the gateway code. And so, I just wanted to have the opportunity for the Planning Commission to take a look at this and, you know, refresh your memory about, you know, where you had landed with this document previously and to be prepared for your work that you'll be doing at your very next meeting. Now, I will point out that we did receive a few public comments on, on this code. And I did want to touch on just a few. There are some clear cleanup items that we need to do in the code, you know, little typos and that sort of thing. And one commenter in particular spent a good bit of time and paid real close attention to those. And so, we have a long list of those in their comment letter to us. But I did want to just address a few changes that I think are, and these are just minor, minor, minor changes that I think are probably going to be a good change for, you know, prior to adoption. So, just for background, when we look at the gateway code, one of the things it's trying to do is to create a space that's, you know, pedestrian-friendly, that's human-scale. That kind of goes back to the basic principles. This is an image out of the gateway code and it is describing the pedestrian realm that includes, you know, an area that has landscaping and, you know, street furniture and that sort of thing, places to park your bike, a large sidewalk area. And then, depending on the frontage type, an area that would feel like part of the public realm, but was, you know, available for, you know, for businesses to put out, you know, tables and chairs or, you know, benches, places to hang out, places to spill the business activity out onto the sidewalk and make it more of an inviting space. And Dylan, if you could put the projector under the screen? Thank you. So, within this pedestrian realm, there are some requirements for the size of these. Depending on the type of frontage, we have active frontages and frontages that are non-active and those were designated on, you know, certain streets, 8th, 9th, L Street. And so, the image from the gateway code to show the differences between, say, active frontage as shown here and the requirements there, three feet for a frontage zone, eight feet for a sidewalk, which adds up to 11 feet. This image shows those areas coming to the property line. The commenter noted that the frontage requirement is 10 feet. So, there's, there's two ways of looking at this. One is that, you know, the, these areas, the frontage zone and sidewalk area need to be contained wholly within the setback, which would put the property line at this location where it's shown here. But I think in practice, what we really are going to have happen is a situation where you have, you know, depending on the street, you're going to have different designs. Similarly, for the non-active, these are areas where these would be houses. So, instead of having your house right up on the sidewalk where people feel like they're in your front yard, maybe giving those a little bit more space. And so, the, the non-active frontage types have a smaller, you know, frontage zone or a larger frontage zone requiring a larger setback. But that totals 13 feet, whereas the, you know, setback is 10 feet. And so, you know, to resolve this, there's, there's a couple of different ways of going about this. You know, what we're looking at in this situation is, you know, what would appear to be a conflict between those setback requirements and these frontage requirements, the pedestrian realm requirement. But really, what is going on here is that the property line, depending on the situation, may be anywhere in this zone, if you will. The intent is to have this space feel like a wide-open space. The intent isn't necessarily to extract from the owner, the property owner, that full 11 or, you know, 13 feet. And this would really depend on the size of, you know, existing infrastructure and planned infrastructure. And the easiest way to consider that is, you know, this landscape amenity zone here. Going back to the other table, the landscape amenity zone is established at four feet. So, if you think of this zone right here being four feet, most of our sidewalks are already five or six feet wide up anyway. And so, part of the sidewalk is already built into what we would consider this sidewalk zone. And so, that means the property line is actually set back in reality from where it's shown in this image. So, I'm only bringing this up to, you know, trying to draw your attention to, you know, at least one of the issues where I think, you know, we, you know, have, you know, kind of already addressed this, but this image is somewhat misleading. So, what I would suggest is having some language added that describes that this property line may fall anywhere within the frontage and sidewalk zone, depending on design. Is that clear enough? Okay, the other item that was brought to my attention was, and this was brought to my attention in a separate conversation, that there's no maximum here for non-active frontage types is a little bit misleading because all of the other standards that are used to define development would lead to it being impossible to have really no maximum frontage requirement, you know, setback requirement. And so, you know, I guess what I'm going to suggest here is that, you know, for, for these properties where we said, you know, that you have no maximum, we either refer to the other standards and leave it just as a dash or we add in a, you know, maximum setback of 20 feet. If we've decided that in active zones, that 20 feet is an appropriate setback. In non-active zones, that seems, you know, like a similarly effective setback. So, if you have a recommendation, I'd be happy to accept that. But, you know, the staff recommendation at this point would be to just put a dash and then a footnote that says that the maximum setback is, you know, dependent on complying with all other code standards.
Are you wanting us to weigh in on these as we roll through them?
That'd be great if you, yeah, if you want to.
So, can, show of hands, is people in favor of staff's recommendation to dash? Okay.
Okay. And that really allows someone who's not in an active zone, if they're building a, you know, primarily multifamily project or completely multifamily project and they wanted to have some, you know, nice landscaping and a, you know, a hangout zone in front of the building because that's what works best for that site, they could go ahead and do that. And you, you would still have to comply with all the other standards. There are several small errors that were pointed out in, in a letter we received. Here's an example of one. Clearly, when we went through and updated the code, when the decision was made to make the maximum building height seven stories- was made to make the maximum building height seven stories, we just didn't catch this. And so there are a number of things like this. Other examples included where one of the tables said 10,000, it should have said 1,000. Really appreciate the work that public put into reviewing the document and providing those comments. It's good to catch these things. They're not, you know, going to be critical flaws if we have a couple of cleanup that we need to do in the first year or so as we're implementing this. But it's good to catch as much as we can now. And so this, again, would just be modified to reflect the, you know, the maximum Tier Four being at seven stories instead of eight stories. Currently, the way that the Gateway Area Plan has structured the tiers, the base tier is four stories, and Tier One is also four stories.
Quick question from Melissa.
Yeah, just a point of information for me and for the public. How will you address simple things like typos in this document a year from now or two years from now? Like, if you just find a typo, what's the process for fixing that?
Yeah, that's a process that we would use for any zone amendment would be applied to those. So it's great to catch them now because it's easy. We can just go in and change them before it's adopted. After it's adopted, that is the ordinance, you know, warts and all. And what we would have to then do is go through a process of amending, adopting a new ordinance to make amendments to those. It requires a public hearing. At the Planning Commission, recommendation to City Council. City Council would then have to approve those and adopt that ordinance. And this is not uncommon. I mean, we had several cleanup items for our land use code when we adopted it that we did in a tranche. I think it was in 2008 and one in 2010 or something like that. And what we'll find as we implement this code, because, you know, we've designed this code around, you know, what we think is going to happen based on, you know, a set of parcels that are imaginary, if you will. We're imagining, you know, square parcels that don't have any other obstacles or, you know, considerations, and we design out the best we can based on those. When we get feedback, as people are starting to try and apply this code and build things that we've asked them to build, we may find that we need to modify, you know, various aspects of it. And so when we get to that point where we're making those modifications, we'll also bring in these minor typos and that kind of thing. The code, the last thing I'll say on this, because I think it's important to understand too, is that we're not just stuck with an error if one slips through, and we just have to apply that error. The zoning ordinance allows the zoning administrator to make code interpretations. And so if there's, you know, if there's a minor error, so for example, if we didn't catch this particular error before we adopted it, and it takes us nine, 10 months to, you know, to get to a code amendment to correct this, that wouldn't mean that people could come in and build eight-story buildings. What it would mean is that when this was brought to, you know, our attention, we would do a zoning interpretation and say, "This table was adopted in error. This is what it should be. This is how we're going to apply it." That was the intent. And so that's how we would handle it in the interim.
Basically, you can deal with them in the short term and fix them in the long term, but we prefer to catch them now.
Exactly. And if there is something that's, you know, supercritical that, you know, we can't fix with a code interpretation, we would probably at that point go to the City Council and ask for, you know, a development moratorium based on, you know, the challenge that we're seeing applying the code. And then we would work on fixing it immediately and get it done, you know, within a month or two. So those are the possible outcomes. I dealt with typos. So, you know, I know that, you know, the commenter had, you know, the comment letter had, you know, many other comments in it. I've reviewed and read and can respond to any that you have questions about. My intent in this meeting is not to go through all of those comments. But if you have questions about them, I'm happy to address them. With that, I'll turn it over to the Commission for any questions that you may have, and then recommend you open it for public comment.
Perfect. Commissioners, now is your opportunity to ask further clarifying questions of staff. Before we go to public comment, does anyone have any additional questions for staff at this time? Okay, seeing none, we will transition to public comment. I'm going to open public comment now. If you're in person, please feel free to line up at the lectern. If you're on Zoom, please raise your hand by selecting the raise hand icon on the right side of your screen or by pressing star nine on your phone. The clerk will unmute you when it is your turn to speak. Feel free to state your name for the record. First speaker, please.
Gregory Daggett. One of the things that I've also been pressing for the last two years is SB 1000, which is the Environmental Justice and Local Land Use Planning, which is a requirement for you to do by the State of California. It's defined as environmental justice is defined in California laws, the fair treatment of people of all races, cultures, and incomes with respect to the development, implementation, and enforcement of environmental laws, regulations, and policies. I got a letter probably like over a week ago from the City of Arcata that you will not be implementing this, which is a requirement for the State of California. You seem to be substituting Equity Arcata as a substitute for this, which I don't know whether I would, you know, they're completely different things. You seem to think there's, I guess the reasoning, there wasn't historically disadvantaged communities. I mean, I'm not so sure about this. I'm not an attorney, but I'm not so sure about how you're just like avoiding this whole thing. So I think we need to address that. I'd also say, for somebody that lives on H Street and who walks a lot and sees a lot of people coming in and out of apartment buildings, which there's a lot of apartment buildings from Sunset to about 15th Street, there's like two of them that are right across the street from me. What I see is a very diverse group of people, you know, it's of all colors. And so I'm a little confused about this, how you're sort of like giving the presentation that there's not a community. And I see a very diverse community. And maybe you need to get information from the college on how diverse the student population is, because I see a lot of students that live in those apartments. And I also see apartments that are on the east side of H Street that, you know, they're not in the best shape. They're, you know, they're a little bit better on the west side, but, you know, they look kind of rundown and not too great. So I would highly advise that you need to really implement SB 1000 in your general plan, which is required from the State of California. I'd also point out, jumping to another subject, over a year ago with the fire district coming here and basically saying, "We don't want to, we don't want to see anything over three stories at this point because we don't have the resources to fight a fire." And they quoted Sora Place to oven fires that could have got out of control. I would like to say that since then, there's been a lot of oven fires. I've kept track of them across the United States, and they're pretty serious what happens. Down in New York, oven fire, kid was playing with it, and the mother didn't shut the door behind, and all the smoke went into the hallway and basically killed a lot of people. One immigrant was trying to save people. He rescued a few. He died in the third attempt. It's happening. So this could, this could happen, and the city would be liable, and individuals too.
Thank you for your comments, Gregory.
Good evening. I'm Fred Wise with ArcataOne.com. You have received my written comments, which I stand behind. I encourage you to look at them on my website rather than PDF because it'd be more updated there. There's over 70 pages of comments. The typos are the smallest issue. When I looked at the Gateway Code, I had no intention of writing 70 or 80 pages of comments, but the more I looked, the more I saw, the worse it got. I concentrated on things that hadn't been discussed, that I thought were worthy of being discussed. Last night, I realized that there are things that you have discussed that are not in the code. Today, I wrote an article, I encourage you to read, about the street-facing garages, which I think you probably remember. You talked about this. On my article, I have the videos, and I have the transcript of what you actually said. It has not changed from the first draft, or the second draft, or the third draft. It says the same thing. How many instances are there like this? I think dozens. And that'll be my next task. You can do what you want, obviously. I'm not here to tell you what to do. But I assure you that if you recommend this current code, you're recommending not what the Commission wants. You know that there's no mention of the L Street corridor linear park. There's no protection from tall buildings from linear park. I don't think that's what the Commission wants. That's up to you. I also think that if it is recommended in its current form, the three-person City Council is not going to be able to approve it. And that's a concern for me, because I want to see this thing done. I can answer any questions. I've become much more knowledgeable about the Gateway Code in the last two weeks than I ever thought I'd be. The only difference between the second draft and the third draft are the addition of those 3D images and a two-line text that refers to the images. There happens to be in those two lines a typo. The whole document seems sloppy. If the purpose, one of the purposes of Form-Based Code is to use the illustrations to show what the intent of the code is. Many of the illustrations are wrong. They show distances that are wrong, they're holdovers from the first draft where things have changed. I respectfully disagree with the Community Development Director on many of the things he said. It should just be a better code. There's going to be problems. The typos are not the issue. It's the larger issues. As you know, I made a guide because the original was too big. I think you, I hope you've seen it. There's about 15 items that I think are the major issues. We can go from there. Thanks.
Thanks for your comments. Does anybody else in the audience care to speak this evening? Anybody waiting online to comment? David?
We do have online. Go ahead, Jim.
Hello to staff and to commissioners. I first want to thank Fred Wise for his dedication to researching details throughout this process of reviewing the Gateway Draft. He's outdone himself on both edits and suggestions for fine-tuning the Form-Based Code. I appreciate his continued effort to remind both Council and Commissioners that the L Street Rails and Trails Corridor should be identified in both the Gateway Draft and the General Plan as a linear park. The corridor will be the centerpiece of the future Gateway infill and should be planned for with dedicated easements when the infill occurs. The greenways at the north and south end, as well as the entire pathway, should be preserved and excluded from the General Plan Policy CM 5E7, eliminating the possibility for a lone zoning administrator and developer to move a Class 1 trail. In addition to identifying and planning for the L Street Linear Park from Alliance Road to Smoeb Boulevard, I want to revisit cap policies scaling into existing neighborhoods to respect both active and passive solar right-of-ways of existing neighborhoods. Existing residential rooftop solars do contribute to the independence from fossil fuels and eases an increasing burden to the individual residents. In addition, net power goes back in the grid and contributes to RTA's clean power energy portfolio and Arcata's goal of going electric. You know, and with that in mind, it's pretty simple. Citing set facts and setbacks, Ken gave attention to existing neighborhoods that you're granting, you know, basically giving that same right to existing neighborhoods, that same thing that you're granting to large-scale investors. Otherwise, this plan will drastically change Arcata in its look, and, you know, a lot of these properties will be shadowed. And I, once again, I also, I hope that you take care of the typos and the errors that will, are throughout the draft, I mean, prior to the adoption of the draft. I mean, talking about the idea that it can be taken care of at some point in the extraneous routes you have to go, it makes a lot of sense, just to wrap this stuff up now. For example, like property lines on L Street, I think that's policy GA 25 GC, it's in the, whatever that diagram is, with it being a maximum of two feet instead of 20 feet, as far as for setbacks on the property line on L Street. Just, I think it'd be good to take care of those ahead of time. Anyway, thanks. And please consider this in your consideration of what you're planning to recommend. Thanks. Bye.
Thanks for your comment. Other commenters waiting?
No, I don't see any other hands.
Okay. Appreciate everyone's comments and input. I'd like to bring this back to the Commission for discussion. In the coming weeks, we will be considering a formal recommendation for approval to the City Council on the general plan and the Gateway Form-Based Code. The Commission has conducted tens, if not hundreds, of hours of review of the Gateway Code and modified the code in several areas. Because of the work and time invested by the Commission and the City Council, and because many decisions about the code have already been made, I do not view this discussion as a re-opener. We are here to make targeted changes and to refamiliarize ourselves with this document before we make the final decision. I understand from the staff report and public comment that there are some errors, minor errors, typos, grammatical mistakes that will certainly be cleaned up for the final document. When we last reviewed the Gateway Code, we recognized that we were going to need some time implementing it to see whether it is accomplishing our goals. I think this is really of the utmost importance. I think there comes a time in our discussions where we get to sort of diminishing returns, and I'm a huge advocate for let's get this approved and see what happens. And for this reason, Commissioner Yodowitz has suggested adding into the code a time-specific review, which I think is a great idea. That has been added, and I still agree with the Commission's position that we need to implement the code and improve it as we go. We will not be able to resolve all of the uncertainties with a desktop review here, no matter how much time we continue to spend on this discussion. But I would very much like to hear from my fellow commissioners on this. Additional questions for staff, comments on the code. Love to hear what the rest of you are thinking.
Scott, how do you want to handle this? I made a list of issues, some large, some small. Should I just go through them?
I think if we have maybe questions of staff, we could start there. And then if individual commissioners have specific kind of points they want to bring up, we can go back to our kind of format, give us an elevator pitch. If someone has an opposing view, we can hear that. If we want to adopt a change, we'll take a vote and then move on. So, go ahead, Abby.
I just had a question. How soon after, like assuming we may take this action tonight, how soon after this will the City Council review the code? Because I'm just wondering how much time you're going to have between us taking this action and them reviewing it to make significant edits, assuming there are some.
Yeah, I'm not going to get a lot of sleep in the next couple of weeks. The City Council is going to review, so you're going to review for a formal recommendation on the 14th. On the 15th, at this point, it looks like on the 15th, the City Council will be likely taking an item to review the changes that you had recommended on the general plan. You recall the table where we tracked all those changes. And then the City Council will be taking up the full item on the 29th of May. And at that point, by the 29th, you know, all of these changes will have been incorporated, and new documents will be, you know, will be out for circulation. So, pretty fast turnaround.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Anybody? Then, oh, go ahead, Joel.
Well, yeah, I have a question, just kind of a general question of staff. And this arises from some of the public comment about a reference, specific reference to the L Street Linear Park in the code, which doesn't seem to be there. And what staff's view on that is?
Yeah, so the L Street corridor was taken up by the City Council at a joint study session of Planning Commission, City Council in September of last year. And the City Council made an action that had three components. The first was to remove the couplet. The first was to remove the couplet, K and L Street couplet, from the plan. So that was a pretty explicit direction to do that. The second was to evaluate safety improvements on K and 11th Street in particular. Recall that the rationale for the K and L Street couplet was to improve bike and pedestrian safety for that couplet area. And retaining all of the traffic on K Street two ways just could not accomplish the same level of safety improvements. And so that was the rationale. What council said was, since we're removing K and L Street, we want you to figure out what you can do on K Street to make it safer and 11th Street where we also have some problem spots. And then the third thing that they asked was for the city to start the process of evaluating a woo-nurf. There was, woo-nurf was the turn of the night, but a full-width linear park on L Street. Essentially, what has happened over the past two years is we've gone through a very in-depth planning process to develop a plan for K and L Street and how to retain the trail on L Street with that couplet process. Very involved public process. What the public said through that process was, we don't like that idea. We'd like to see all of the traffic on K Street, and further, we'd like to see L Street developed as a linear park. We have not gone through the public process that's necessary to establish what the L Street will look like. And we haven't gone through even what the improvements on K and 11th are going to look like. We're starting that process right now, in fact. We're getting on top of that, and there are funds that are budgeted into this upcoming fiscal year to do more work on that. But we've already got a contract that we're going through to do some preliminary public engagement on what those safety improvements will look like. And so we're implementing the direction that we received in September. And I understand, you know, I went back and listened to the tape from September. I understand why it could have been confusing and why the public would have understood the council's action to be change the document so that it shows L Street as a linear park. We haven't gone through that planning process yet. And so the code does allow, the changes that we did make, do allow for additional woo-nurfs and, you know, full-width linear parks to be added in the future. There's a specific code section that encourages that where it's, you know, where it's desired, desirable. And so I guess my response to why the L Street linear park is not added into the gateway code currently in this draft that we're looking at today is because I don't believe we received direction to do so by the council. And I have confirmed this with council members and city manager, so this is not just my interpretation. And I do think that we will be looking forward to going through that process in the future.
Chair, I'm not sure how you want, I have another, just, I mean, like Peter, maybe I have a whole list of things, but I did have a comment, a question of staff of something I just did not really fully understand in the code when I went back this last time, and that is the greenways. I mean, when I read that, I'm just not sure what to make of that.
You're not sure what the greenways are, or?
My question is, are they just intended to be conceptual right now? Or I just don't fully understand what the intent of the code is and how the code intends to implement the greenways. Because some of them go through private property, and I don't know how you do that. And it says something in there that these are in these general locations, and I just don't know how something can be that vague and be a provision in a zoning code.
Yeah, so the greenways map is intended to, many of these locations are on rail corridors or, you know, or on sort of the margins of properties. Some of them, we, you know, for instance, on the map shown here, you know, we don't know, what this is trying to show you is that we want to make a connection between this point here and this point here with one of these greenways. It could be that not all of these are developed, you know, it could be that the, you know, and definitely, you know, they're not going to be developed exactly in the locations. You know, this one is shown as going through a building. The idea is that we want to get from this point to this point. And the way that we would implement that is that as a project comes forward, we would say, hey, look, you know, you need to be consistent with the code. The code shows that there's a greenway going through your property. Show us where on your property you're going to, you know, reserve land for that greenway, where you're going to install this greenway. And this is one of the ways where those projects that are coming forward that are, you know, getting this principally permitted pathway for review are able to comply with the code, recognizing that we don't know all the bits and pieces right now. We haven't gone through a very detailed plan to know exactly where those trails are going to be, how many of them are actually going to be needed. You know, we've got two greenways, this one and this one, that are about 300 feet apart. You know, do we need both of those? It may be that as the development comes forward, you know, we don't, and there's something else that is equally applicable. And so these would be, for the most part, these are going to be, you know, public easements, so publicly accessible private open space that we're securing through the permitting process. The intent here is not for the city to go and say, okay, property owner, we're going to put a trail through your property here. The intent is that when this property owner comes forward and says, you know, I'd like to develop, we then look at the code and say, well, these are the things you need to do to comply to develop.
Thank you.
Given that, Peter, do you want to start us off with what you have in the way of, now, questions, or these are proposals, or how are we categorizing this?
Sometimes they're questions, sometimes they're proposals. Some are pretty trivial, some are pretty involved. Can you go to page five on the?
And can we get that on our monitors, please? Thank you, Dylan.
There, there you go, that table. So, that table has three categories, but later on in the code, there is another table, and it eliminates the middle row of this table. And I suggest we do that, that the middle row be subsumed into the bottom row. That is, up to 30,000 square feet, this is what's happening. Above 30,000 square feet, this is what's happening. I don't think we need that middle row. So, that's a detailed suggestion. You know, it doesn't seem like that's very helpful, the middle row.
Staff position?
I'd be interested in the table that you think eliminates this middle.
Let's see. Where was it? It's the open space table, but I don't know which page that is.
Just tell me the table number.
I don't have the table number. It's the open space table. Maybe if you search for open space. It's near the, it's near the bottom. There you go.
Okay, these are really dealing with quite different types of issues. This table is talking about what the open space requirement is.
Sure.
It has no bearing on what the approval process is.
Well, I understand that.
Okay.
It's not a big deal. It's a suggestion.
Well, I just wanted to clarify that piece. So those, in terms of the ministerial review, this was what the commission landed on in its previous discussions, having a zoning administrator hearing for, you know, hearing for those middle-sized projects that was noticed, and that it's a formal hearing. The, you know, fact of the matter is, and I advised the planning commission on this previously, that having a hearing for a ministerial process is not a very intuitive approach. You're basically saying, I'm going to sit here in front of the public, and I'm going to look at the project and evaluate it against the list, and then when I confirm that it complies with all those objective standards, I'm going to approve it. And so I think there was a reluctance to give up on the idea that we were going to have ministerial, or that we were going to have discretionary approvals. There was a reluctance to leave behind the idea of, you know, having these public hearings. I think that, if you want my professional opinion, that the second and the third should be stricken, and all of these reviews should be done as a ministerial review, as a true ministerial review. But I understand the public desire to have eyes on when you're having these larger projects, and I think it's really important to, you know, maintain the streamlining that you achieve through having the lowest body possible approve a project while still trying to address the concerns that the public have, you know, and the perception that these projects are going to be, you know, big and different, and they want to see them made by, you know, multiple people, and they want an opportunity to say, hey, you missed the, you know, the facade improvement here. So it's really up to the commission. One thing I would suggest is that you approach changes to the decisions that have already been made pretty cautiously, instead of trying to upend decisions that have already been made because they went through a very long and lengthy public process, that you just honor those and figure out, you know, over the course of the next year, how are these working for us, and do we need to change them?
Yeah, I'm uneasy about changing this because there was, early on in this process, the issue of the height of buildings was really important to the community, and part of the position that we took to address and incorporate these concerns was this table and the sort of staggered review authority. So I definitely, I'd be uneasy to make that change myself.
To give you a sense, too, for the building size, that middle rung is basically, you know, four-story buildings. And currently, if a four-story building comes into the planning commission, this code or no, because of the Housing Accountability Act, if it meets all the objective standards, even if we called it a discretionary review, you wouldn't be able to reduce the size of it, you wouldn't be able to disapprove it. And so, and that's because of state law. That's not a local law, that's because of state law. And so there, you know, some of this, I feel like has, you know, some of the innovative thinking that we were doing seven years ago when we designed all of this has been surpassed by, you know, more recent state laws.
I'm fine. It was a suggestion. This is more substantial. Solar access and shading has been a big issue in talking, especially about the big buildings that we're planning for the gateway area. And I can understand that, it's important. Let me point out, from a solar energy standpoint, the amount of energy we're going to lose by shading is very small. That said, I think personally that housing is way more important than shading. And the fact that, so on page five, it includes, see right there, it includes that the project has to meet the standards in the solar siding and solar access ordinance. And these big buildings aren't gonna, I mean, we're kidding ourselves. If, they're going to fail on that over and over again. So either we admit that that's going to be true and we strike the solar siding and solar access from this list, or I don't know what else we can do. By approving large buildings, we're going to be approving shading, and I think we just need to admit that and live with it.
The chapter 956 of the land use code is actually a reiteration of state law, and it primarily deals with existing rooftop solar, and there are some, you know, some requirements around that, and...
There are exceptions.
There are.
In that, yeah.
Yes, there are. And so, you know, I think that, you know, we're trying to be explicit in this section about the other sections of the land use code that apply when you're doing ministerial review to ensure that, you know, these specific resources are addressed in the review, but they would apply regardless of our being explicit in this code. I think it's good to point people to them, but they still apply. So without going back and making changes to the underlying code in the land use code for solar siding and solar access, and then ensuring that that's compliant with state law, just removing it here wouldn't actually have the effect of changing how we have to review and approve projects. Just to throw that out there.
Do we, so you're saying we should just leave this alone?
I think I would, again, because part of the reason we explicitly state these in here is because people did have concerns about, you know, meeting these other objectives that we have in the code. And so, you know, it's having it embedded in the gateway code, this other body of, you know, land use ordinance, ensures that, you know, as we're going through the checklist, that we'll be verifying that we're compliant with those other standards.
Any other, go ahead, Melissa.
I just had a thought that we, could there be a reference to this state law in these sections to bring maybe some clarity or depth to the document?
Yeah, the 956 actually does reference the state law. And what this section, just to be clear, what this section does not say is that you cannot cast shade onto another property. That's not what the solar siding and solar access section says. And I can pull it up for you if you're really interested, but it's, you know, it has some limitations and some exemptions on existing solar.
Any other commissioners concerned about this language from staff?
No, but that just prompts a question that I have. Under SEQA, if, is shading, are there any circumstances where shading by itself is considered to be a significant environmental impact? I don't know what the law is on that.
There's no, appendix G, the checklist for SEQA that you use to evaluate environmental impact, does not have shading on it. I can't think of a situation, I mean, I think we'd have to stretch to come up with a situation where shading would be an environmental impact.
Perhaps under a... Let's move on to your next issue, Peter, question, suggestion.
Page 30, please. It says that solar energy facilities may project a maximum of up to 5 feet above the building. a maximum of up to five feet above the building. That's pretty, that's a small amount. I mean, most solar panels will stick up more than that. So I suggest we make it...
I think you read it wrong, maybe, Peter. It says it may project above the maximum building height. So isn't that stating that it can go above?
By up to five feet. Yeah, and I suggest maybe eight feet. I, you know, I, let's have big solar panels, as we can.
I don't, yeah, I mean, I...
No staff opinion. Planning commission in favor of allowing for higher projection of energy facilities past five feet when necessary? Okay with that? Okay?
Okay.
We're okay with that?
Moving right along, let's see, page 34, the long building design standards. Yeah, actually, you could show the, well, it says that you have to break up a building that could be 300 feet long, that's longer than a city block, with one vertical facade that has 64 square feet. So if it has a width of eight feet, that's eight feet tall. And it's this huge building. Look at the diagram. I mean, am I missing something here? That doesn't seem like very much of a breakup of a huge, long facade.
Would, would your suggestion be then to make it a percentage of this facade, like 30% horizontal articulation?
I didn't come up with an answer. I just came up with a complaint. The ones that come before this are much more prescriptive and require much more facade breakup than this one. They seem incompatible with each other, actually. I mean, if you keep going, you'll see, there are many. So anyway, I just point that out. That seems like inconsistent with the other facade regulations. And I don't have a suggestion.
I think my preference for the commission is that we focus our discussions on areas where there's specific suggestions, like your rooftop solar, because they lead to kind of productive changes that affect our process. Otherwise, it feels like we're reopening a discussion that we've had. So just for everyone, if there's a specific proposal, I'm okay with that, but I don't wanna just sort of drift circularly.
All right.
I'd also like to point out that, you know, this, these are, you know, these requirements stack, so, you know... Yes, and we can bring back a more detailed response at our next meeting, or I can talk with you offline.
All right, let's see, page 39, building entries. This is a detail as well. It shows a canopy or recess of four feet.
What page are we on, I'm sorry?
Page 39. Yeah, there you go. That seems pretty minimal to me. I suggest something like five or six feet.
Go ahead, Abby.
I have a question that kind of goes off of Peter's topic here, which is, in our last meeting, we talked about recessed entries and the kind of instances they pose for being a good place to shelter. Obviously, it's under weather protection. But I also was wondering, like, looking at page 71 in our packet where we talk about garage doors and entries, there's even a subsection that describes, like, what kind of metals should be used. And I don't think it's very specific about scissor gates, and I don't know that we're ready to make it very specific about scissor gates. But I would wonder if there could be a sentence about security fencing in, you know, the entryways. Just looking at this recessed entry brought that question to me, too. So I don't know how deep the entry should be, but maybe we should consider that.
Okay.
Was there a question? I guess the question was, does staff feel that, like, that section should be edited in any way, shape, or form to address it's scissor gates? Or will it be before it goes back to the council? Because I know we might have discussion on it.
And this was one of the things that the commenter brought up about the gateway code. It does have an allowance for scissor gates explicitly. And so, you know, now would be a time to remove that, you know, given the discussions that you've had, or if you wanna wait to get council, you know, direction from that, or at least just flag it for the council that, you know, hey, this is an issue. But in terms of, you know, editing this to, you know, make it so that it doesn't provide, you know, safe harbor for someone sheltering overnight, you know, that's kind of a fraught, you know...
Yeah, I, my preference would be, since we've already asked the council to give us direction and to weigh in, to wait on that, because we could sort of cover it with one fell swoop. So, next item.
Garage, where am I? Page 43, shared garages and parking structures. These are allowed to open onto the street, and we do not allow individual garages to open onto the street. We made a big point of that. And I don't think we should allow any garages or parking structures to open onto the street. So I think this needs to be changed.
If I remember correctly, our discussion was about stranding some buildings because of the way they don't have access to an alleyway or a side street. Is that correct?
Yeah, I mean, the only, for those middle-block properties, the only way to access them, if you didn't allow a garage opening, and not all projects would elect to have a garage opening, probably, especially on some of our smaller width properties. But if you didn't allow for a garage opening, they would have to have a, an opening of some sort. You know, you'd have to have some way to egress that site. But I think, you know, this was another area where the comment did raise an important question in the way that the standard's written. No more than 25% of the site frontage facing the street may be devoted to garage opening unless the street frontage is less than 80 feet. So you can have an 80, 20-foot garage opening in that case. But this doesn't guard against someone having 25% of a 100-foot, a 200-foot, a 300-foot-long building. And that, I don't think was the intent, so it'd be good to put some guardrails that, you know... You know, I think you could probably even just say, and I'll consult with the city engineer, but you could probably just say that, you know, garage openings shall be no larger than 25 feet.
Yeah, if you can get confirmation from city engineering so that we can set an upper limit, then it will be less percentage-driven, which seems to be practical.
I disagree. I don't wanna have garages, whatever they are, open onto the street. I'm a bike rider. This is really dangerous to have a garage open onto the street. It's something I fear, and it's something I've almost crashed into. And I don't think we should allow it. We don't allow it for single-family or individual garages. So we shouldn't allow it. I think that people can plan around that.
Go ahead, Melissa.
I think that maybe, maybe staff could help us, at a future meeting with some verbiage that not only sets a maximum, but maybe also places some of these safeguards on it, as in, you know, this would only maybe be allowed when there isn't a side street or an alternative to this street-facing garage. So we would only allow it when there's no alternative to a maximum size. That's a suggestion.
The... We can explore that, yes.
In conjunction with the other components of this discussion that you bring to engineering? Okay.
Thanks.
Let's go.
I'm almost done.
Okay.
Under, page 52, parking location and design. 52. There is, well, there is no provision for electric vehicle charging in parking spaces. Do we wanna require some? It seems to me that going forward, it's gonna be important to the way we want transportation to evolve in Arcata.
The number of, minimum number of electric vehicle chargers is set in building code. And I think that the building code is gonna be more adaptable and change more quickly than, you know, our zoning ordinance likely will. So I would, I would offer that you can defer to building code for that. And if you wanna put a, you know, specific incentive, I mean, I think, you know, we talked about, you know, in the Community Benefits Program, we had a whole lot of these types of incentives that ultimately got stripped out. But if, you know, as the planning commission leads up to its final recommendation on this, you wanna consider adding something back in, like an incentive for, you know, additional EV chargers, you can consider that. What the commission decided previously, though, was all of these once-on-site amenities that were addressing just the residents' needs weren't really community benefit, and so all of those got stripped out.
It still seems to me we should at least mention it as a positive, you know, addition to parking.
I think the worry would be if we put in something about EV charging requirements into our code, and it's already baked into building code, if in the future there was a conflict, we would have to amend.
I'm not saying put in a requirement. I'm saying, say that providing for EV charging is to be encouraged. Something like that.
I think that's something that we can definitely do in the gateway plan. I feel like there probably already is language to that effect in the plan itself. In the zoning ordinance, we really want these to be objective standards that we're requiring people to do. And so I would stray from having aspirational language in the zoning ordinance.
Okay, last one. Let's see, oh, I didn't write the page. Bicycle parking for a... Where is? Do you have it? Yeah. It talks about having bike, secure bike parking 750, or a maximum of 750 feet from its use. That seems way too far to me. Maybe change that to 250? There it is, yeah, thanks.
Yeah, we can, we can change this. I think the, I think the intention here was envisioning, like, a seven-story building, and your bicycle parking has to be within 750 feet of your unit. It's, you know, on the same site. It's a little, it's a strange concept to try and encompass. And so, you know, if you had a large enough, if you had a large enough project, you'd have to have multiple long-term bike parkings onsite because you couldn't be 750 feet. And I think that's what we were trying to do with this, this code. But, you know, the idea is that you have ready access on your site to long-term bicycle parking.
Okay, but I'm envisioning getting out on a rainy day and walking 750 feet to my bike. And I don't think I should have to. I think the bike parking should be in the basement, so I can just walk down and get my bike.
Yeah, and I, you know, I could have this wrong, but imagine you're on the seventh floor of a seven-story building. Okay, and then, within that building, you have to have 750 feet from that location, you have to be able to access your bike. So we're not saying that, you know, every floor is gonna have long-term bike storage. We're not saying that you're gonna be able to bring your bike into your house and have long-term bike storage there. But we're saying that there's going to be a place in that project, the intent is that this is on the same site, it's within 750 feet, maximum, within 750 feet. So you'd be walking inside your building to get to that bike access. We're not sending you out across the street in the rain to get to your bike.
If you're on the seventh floor, you're only 70 feet from the bottom.
Yeah, and the bike parking might be diagonal to your unit. And so you might have to walk 750 feet to get to your bike.
I don't think so.
I mean, you can make it whatever you want to make it. I'm just, I'm trying to, you know, describe to you why I think that the number was selected. If you make it a smaller number, that's gonna mean more smaller bike parking areas. Again, this is something that I don't think we're gonna be able to discover by talking about it. I think we're gonna have someone come in and pencil out a project and say, there's no way I can put, you know, long-term bike storage every 250 feet. Or they're gonna say, there's no way I can put it every 750 feet. We don't know that, and I don't think we're gonna discover it by talking about it. So pick a number, and we can put it in there.
Other commissioners wanna weigh in on this?
Yeah, if we just eliminate the distance requirement and say it's within the, I don't know, perimeter of the use. There's something like, some vague language, so we know it's onsite.
Or just the words onsite?
I mean, I would feel better about that. It does, I agree with Peter that 750 feet does seem a long way. And I could imagine a lot of buildings that would not require a 750-foot walk to get to a charger if it was onsite.
True, I mean, that's two blocks. It's a lot, that's a big building.
Yeah, so...
So you, okay, so let me, let me...
I like the onsite suggestion from Melissa. I think that makes more sense. I think it gets to what the city is trying to say, but does it in a slightly more flexible, elegant way.
Okay, so just saying onsite.
Yeah, it would, my suggestion would be long-term bicycle parking shall be located onsite within 750 feet of the use that is intended. Or you just take out within 750 feet of the use that's intended and just say, shall be located onsite. I have a third suggestion where you say, located onsite within X number of feet of the building's primary entrance, something like that. But adding onsite into 4AI, somewhere in that sentence.
Yeah, let's not say 750 feet. Yeah, I agree with Peter. Let's say onsite and eliminate the distance.
Yeah, I think, if we're gonna go with onsite, let's eliminate the distance. Let's go with onsite, just make that swap, please. Okay, is that the end of what you brought to us this evening?
I am done.
Perfect, thank you very much for that. Joel, I know you have some items, so fire away.
I have a few, kind of in the manner of Peter, and I wanna thank Fred Weiss. Some of these were some of his suggestions as well. On the same page that Peter was just looking at, page 54 of the proposed, of this draft of the code, packet page 82, there's a table for bicycle parking spaces. I don't wanna run afoul of you, Chair, in terms of suggesting that we increase that, or think about increasing that, or ask staff's input on how the... Let me...
What is your, give us your central concern.
That there, I'd like to maximize the number of bicycle parking spaces, and I'm not sure that this table does it. I don't wanna handicap developers and take over their building with bicycle parking. But I also wanna, you know, accommodate and encourage bicycle, bicyclists, or those using bicycles, to use their bike to go to offices, neighborhood serving commercial uses, et cetera. And we could do that... And we could do that by increasing the number of spaces.
Staff?
I have a point of clarity, sorry. Is this one, is that square feet, site size, floor area, or footprint in that table?
That's building floor area. Yeah, and this does match pretty closely with what, you know, standard parking standards are for vi, for cars. You know, so for instance, on multifamily residential, I mean, you've got one, one per six is not typical for, for, you know, vehicles. But if you look at the, you know, commercial type uses, one space for five hundred square feet is pretty typical for car parking standards. And so you're basically creating a bike parking lot that is, approximates what you would typically see for a car parking lot in those uses. So I, I think those other uses are probably appropriately sized. For multifamily, I mean, you could consider raising it. This, this is an area where, you know, again, similar to the idea of like, you know, if we're dedicating space for, you know, for cars, then we're taking space away from housing. It's the same for all the different uses that we're planning onsite. We want, you know, nice, attractive landscaping, that's, you know, a unit that someone's not living in. So I, I don't know that I can give you a specific number that I would recommend at this point, but those are the things that I think you should take into consideration when deciding on a number.
Yeah, I, I don't have a specific number in mind either. I mean, it'd be nice to know what other jurisdictions do or what, you know, yeah.
I've seen other jurisdictions put a maximum on the number of, of bicycle parking spaces that are required of a development, so it would look similar to this, where it's one per X number of square feet of floor area to a maximum of, let's say, fifteen, or twenty, or twenty-five. So then it's not a barrier to development moving forward because somebody could see this requirement, say, well, I want to build a hundred thousand square foot building, I'm going to have to put in all these, all these bicycle parking spaces, and they say, I don't want to do that, I don't want to adhere to that. So potentially setting a maximum to the number of, a, a maximum requirement could, could help. And my, my point of clarity on this chart is, is maybe adding the word square feet of floor area or footnote that says that this is floor area, because I have seen a chart like this confuse people on that exact point.
Abby, anything from you on this question about?
No, I'm just, I mean, I'm thinking about it, and I don't know that I've ever seen one bicycle parking space by itself. Like, all of the equipment used to store bikes is usually multiple bikes, so I don't, I just have a hard time seeing one bicycle parking space. I think that, I mean, if there's a recommendation by the commission to increase this, then I'd consider it, but I haven't heard a number.
I think one per six units for short-term spaces is too small. Should be... And, and you're right, Abby, you usually see, you know, five or six bike parking stands that go together.
I, I may have misunderstood. Where's the one?
In the bottom middle column.
The one per six units?
Yeah. That's pretty small.
So this is, short-term parking spaces for bikes, for every six units, you'd have one space, so if you had twelve, you'd have two, et cetera, et cetera. And so if somebody rolls up to visit you, they have a place to put their bike short-term. In this other long-term spaces, there's actually one per bedroom, which is way more bike parking than you would have. I mean, that's, that's a very aggressive number. I, I would be shocked to see, I mean, I will be enthusiastic, but I will also be shocked to see if we don't have, you know, the first developer out the gate say, there's no way I'm putting in one long-term bike parking space per unit, or per bedroom. That's never going to pencil for me. And then we're going to have to come back and, and re-decide that. At this point, we don't know. And so I think that's, that's pretty aggressive. So that's, that's quite a bit of bicycle parking on a multifamily project.
And when we say bicycle parking, do we just, what do we mean exactly? Do we mean covered, locked, secured storage? Or are we talking about just a metal rack that you put your front wheel in?
Yeah, I think short-term spaces, that's exactly it. It's a bike rack.
Yeah, short-term spaces are typically a bike rack. It says in the next section down, I'll make, make it so you can read it yourself. Short-term bicycle parking shall be located within a hundred feet of the primary entrance of the structure or use it's intended to serve, and those would be typically bike racks. And then, long-term bike parking may be located in garages or other limited access areas for exclusive use by tenants, residents, or employees. Long-term bike parking may not be located within an area of a dwelling unit primarily intended to serve a different function. So this has to be dedicated bike parking that is accessible to those residents within the building. Secured space.
But we're talking about a metal rack.
Metal rack?
Right.
Maybe to hold the bike up, but you're talking inside a building with secure, so long-term has access for exclusive use by tenants. So it's going to be a structure that has a lock on it that the tenants have the key for to get their, their bike. Once you get inside that space, yeah, there may be racks that the bikes are, you know, sitting on individually locked, but...
It's not like a rack on the sidewalk.
It's a locker. It's a bike locker.
Yeah, I mean, this can be solved in any number of different ways, but the, the, you know, and, and we'll leave that up to the developments themselves to figure out how to do that, but, but the key is that the public can't access it, you can only access it if you're, you know, a user of that building, whatever the building type is, and that it's basically indoor and secured.
Okay, Joel, go ahead.
Okay. We, we haven't made any decision on increasing the number of bike parking spaces, but that, we can always do that.
I personally feel like this is a very aggressive, you know, amount of bicycle parking that we're already requiring. I would hesitate to want to require more myself.
Okay. Where are you laying, Abby? Comfortable or want to change?
I'm comfortable where it stands.
Okay. Joel?
I, I'll, I'll go along with my fellow commissioners.
Okay, let's leave this one alone then, and put this in the column of things that we get to see what happens when we start seeing things happen.
Okay, let me try to go through the rest of my list. On page ten of the code auto sales, I'd like to clarify the definition of what that means as a prohibited use. Right, right now it says auto and vehicle sales and rental are prohibited. One of the commenters, Mr. Weiss, said, what about zip cars? So I don't know whether we need a zoning administrator interpretation, or we want to put this in the code, something like rental cars on public streets or something like that are, are allowed, or zip cars or something like that, so it doesn't prohibit zip cars within the gateway area. Also, I'd like to clarify that a charging station is not considered an automobile use, whether under that category, under new vehicle services. And thirdly, I'd like to suggest that we allow a use of new, of vehicle sales of electric or non-gas using vehicles if they're sold, like, in an office setting and not on a lot. So something like that.
Other commissioners?
I'm fine with that. Kind of the Tesla model, you mean? Yeah. Yeah, that's what I was thinking of.
Melissa?
Would that fall under commercial uses, including retail? So it would be like a, or even an, an office where they could come in and speak to a salesman?
Yeah, what, but, I don't know, I, I've never bought a Tesla. I think I've walked by where they have them, like, in an office-like setting, and maybe the car's in, in that setting, but it's not like your traditional auto dealer.
Abby?
Nothing, no comment.
Staff, David, do you want to speak to what this was trying to get at and whether, I think obviously the, the concern of the commission is that we're going to in some way limit electrical or vehicles that are going to reduce the kind of EMTs of fossil fuels that we're, we're after here, if, if I'm understanding everyone?
Yeah, I think if C eight reads auto and vehicle sales, lots and rental lots, that would probably cover it. If you want, we can add additional, you know, language to exempt out, you know, just to be clear, you can do a zip car.
So an office is clearly not a lot, therefore we don't have to call it out because it's just specifically calling out lots.
Yeah, that's fine.
Is everyone comfortable with that? Okay. Sound good? Keep going.
Okay. Page forty-three of the code, under windows. Under paragraph two standards, which starts on the bottom of page forty-two and carries over to page forty-three, sections, subsection C says windows, mirrored glass, and spandrel glass are prohibited along the ground floor building frontage. I would propose that we prohibit mirrored glass anywhere in the building. Also, I would like to clarify or add that ground floor windows need to be transparent except in residential buildings on the ground floor.
What are, what are the concerns that are kind of driving this? Just so I understand.
Mirrored glass to me, I am not a fan of mirrored glass. I think it's repulsive. So right now it's just prohibited along the ground floor only, and I think that's to, so people can look into buildings and see active uses and not feel like they're being walled out of the building.
Right.
So that's why I suggest that we have some sort of transparency requirement on the ground floor of, of anything that's not a residential building. And to prohibit mirrored glass anywhere in a building.
Staff have a take on that suggestion?
Well, as I understand, the concern is to make sure that ground floor has transparent windows, and, and your read is that C does not in fact do that.
I think what Joel's saying is that it should be expanded to the buildings in general and not limited to exemptions on the ground floor.
Well, I understand that with respect to mirrored glass, but are you suggesting that window films should be prohibited throughout the entire building?
No, I'm not.
Just the ground floor? Yeah, so I, I guess I'm not sure how C doesn't, I mean, I guess we could just say, you know, ground floor, non-residential ground floor, windows on non-residential buildings on the ground floor shall be transparent.
That feels like it would cover it, is that?
And then another mirrored glass is not allowed?
Yes.
I'm not sure what the implications of not allowing mirrored glass are. I don't know if there's like energy savings, or I don't know if there's, if there's some other kind of, you know, structural infrastructure component to mirrored glass. I, I don't want to, I don't want to rule out something that might have some kind of environmental impact on the building. I, I don't know.
I'll tell you, mirrored glass will have an environmental impact because it will cast a sunbeam at weird angles all over the place.
Okay. Well, go ahead, Peter.
While we're at it, here's the Scissor Gate statement. Do we want to change that while we're here?
No.
All right.
We, we want to wait to hear what the city council said and wait for them to give us direction so that the scope of our decision, we get to kind of nail it and not have to revisit it. I'm still not sure where we land on window films. I think your suggestion for language that says a non-commercial residential first floor shall be transparent, did I get that right?
Yeah, what I have is windows shall be transparent on ground floor of non-residential buildings.
That's what I meant, non-residential. I think we're all okay with, is everyone okay with that? I should just check in. Is, how's everyone feel?
I'm totally okay with it. I just feel like it's already written in on the top of page seventy. We have this non-residential transparency standard of sixty-five percent.
And then I have a second, what I'm calling right now C point five, which is mirrored glass is not allowed.
Everyone, everyone feel comfortable with all of that? Okay. Bueno. Next.
This one, maybe I'll ask staff, it's a new proposal, but I didn't see anything in here on screening of mechanical equipment is, and whether we should adopt a provision to the effect of prohibiting the placement of mechanical equipment on, or it's visible from street frontages or something like that.
I think that would work in most cases, especially, you know, if you're thinking of, you know, condensers and that sort of thing. I could even see a requirement that, you know, condensers be on, you know, in, in special structures or, you know, on, on rooftops. Typically, that could be done. There are instances where, you know, you know, for instance, backflow preventers are above ground, you know, necessary above ground in the street right of way for safety reasons. And so if we're considering, you know, all kinds of mechanical equipment, including, you know, other pieces of infrastructure, I think we'd have to get a little more subtle. But if we're talking about, you know, actual pieces of machinery that are, you know, serving the building, we could probably write something like that.
Concerns or questions from the rest of the commission about shielding actual mechanical equipment? Okay.
So I'm going to free-form it a little bit here. This is, this is me rapping.
Okay.
So, so I'm going to, I'm going to write something that is to the effect of mechanical equipment shall be either inside the structure, inside structures built to contain them outside of front setbacks, street-side setbacks, or on rooftops. Does that work?
Are you saying the, the same kind of height? What kind of height restrictions are there on the rooftop?
That's a good question, and they should probably be shielded by a parapet. And if you wanted to make solar eight feet, I would guess, I'd recommend up to eight feet.
I think solar is an exception. I, I would, I would hope mechanical equipment would be lower than eight feet, and typically it is. I mean, that would...
I have no idea. I have my own personal experience, but I am not an expert in this field, so I, I can't, I can't make any statements to that.
Are these covered in the building code?
Not design specifications. I mean, the, you know, mechanical equipment can go on, on rooftops, oftentimes it is. Oftentimes, it is. But I think that, you know, if you're going to allow for it on a rooftop for visual purposes, you probably want a parapet to shield it. You know, on a 50-story building, does it matter if you have an eight-foot parapet? That's probably not taking up the entire building also, you know, it's just, you know, periodic. So I, I think that's a reasonable place to start and maybe it's something we can try and see if it, you know, comes out the way we think it's going to.
How's the commission feel about that? Sorry.
Yeah, my only thought was that you could almost write it with more flexibility, something like, "To the extent feasible, mechanical equipment will be shielded from view by something compatible with the adjacent architecture." And then just leave it at that, "To the extent feasible." I wonder if getting too specific on this could again pigeonhole it. So that's my thought is maybe staff could draft something that has some flexibility.
Yeah, I think with the Housing Accountability Act, we're going to wind up seeing no parapets because they'll say it's not feasible and, you know, we'll have really nothing to.
Come back with.
To come back with. We have to have standards that are explicit, and if they're not working the way that we think they're working, then we can change them, but.
It has to be more specific.
Yeah, I would, I would recommend an objective standard on that one.
Okay, where's everyone else landing in support of an objective standard? And you're saying eight, an eight-foot parapet?
Yeah, I would suggest six feet is enough and that it's different than solar.
I mean, mechanical, to me, doesn't that imply like moving parts in some way? Like, solar isn't really mechanical, right? I mean, I don't know, I'm just.
I think it would be considered part of the mechanical systems of the building, even though it doesn't have moving parts, which is why I tried to draw attention to, you know, backflow preventers, because those are required to be in an area that's accessible, you know, so they can be serviced.
Right.
Or in emergency situations.
I don't know what the right answer is here.
Why don't you run with that language? We'll limit it to five feet and then, six feet, excuse me, six feet. And we'll see how it goes. If a developer comes in and says, it's got to be six and a half or we just can't build this building, we'll have another follow-up conversation.
Is everyone comfortable with that?
Sure.
Okay.
Okay, I'm getting close to the end. Page 59, active uses, paragraph eight, C says, "Active uses are permitted to spill out into open space if they provide seating and shading." So, you know, if a restaurant or some other active, similar active use puts tables and chairs, they can take over the entire open space. I don't think that's fair to the non-customers of that building. So maybe we, I'd like to put some sort of percentage in there saying, you know, active uses are permitted to spill out up to X percent of the open, of the open space if they provide seating and shading. And I'm not sure what that percentage is. I would suggest something like, you know, 10% or 20% or.
Other commissioners concerned about this language or feel comfortable with staff recommendation? Support of change or comfortable with staff position?
Comfortable, staff.
Yeah, comfortable.
Abby?
Yeah, I'm comfortable with staff. I'm also just, yeah, I mean, if we were to put this into practice and somebody comes out with a restaurant and they provide us a site plan, like they'll, and we say something like 10%, like we're going to measure or ensure that they, like, I just, I'm just trying to understand like how that would be enforced, this 10%. So I'm happy with the way it is, just trying to put it into practical terms.
Okay, let's leave that one.
That's all.
Okay. All right. Well, I appreciate everyone's work and the thought everyone's put together to come prepared for these discussions. That's useful. Staff, you got everything you needed out of that portion of it before we move on?
Yep.
I'd like to transition now to correspondence and communications and check in and see if we have any correspondence from planning commission members. Seeing none, I would like to check in if we have any correspondence from staff.
Yeah, there's, there's two quick things. One, we have changed the way that we produce minutes. Historically, we put a brief synopsis. If the person gave their name, we say who they were, a brief synopsis of what they said, and list that under the agenda items. There was a time early on in, you know, reviewing all the general plan work, that we shifted that because there was some concern about, you know, how the, you know, public comments were being portrayed. I think it's useful to have that information in the record written in a brief format so you can go back and see what folks have said. And so I guess if I can get a nod that that's something that's of importance to you all, then I'll bring it back as an agenda item. If you don't want to see, you know, these brief descriptions of what folks said during public comment on your agendas and you're fine with us just saying three members of the public spoke on this item, then I won't put it on an agenda. So it's not a formal decision, but if you're, and I don't want to get into deliberations, if you're just flash in the pan like they're good the way they are, or I need time to think about it, we can move on.
I would say staff's time is probably better spent and we all likely tune into the hearings or go back and watch them anyways, so I'd be happy or okay with removing the comments from the public specifically like that.
Okay. I don't want to actually take a vote and have deliberations. I'm just throwing that out there if you're, you know.
Fine with how it's being done right now. And it's, you know, staff assessing the comments turned into a whole separate thing, so I think we got here for a reason and I think we should stay here.
Okay. The other item is that there's a zoning administrator hearing that will be holding tomorrow at noon.
12:30.
12:30? I stand corrected. And the zoning administrator hearing is on a, you know, small multifamily project. There is a lot of neighborhood concern about the project because the zoning administrator is one person making a decision and the planning commission is, you know, seven. What I'm going to be doing is after taking the action on that, extending the appeal period for that project to 14 days, which allows us to come and report that project to you at your next hearing. And what the question will be to you at that time is whether you want to appeal the zoning administrator's decision. Typically, a, you know, a decision has a 10-day appeal period, so I'll be extending that for the commission to be able to, to take that into consideration. Zoning administrator, the planning commission by, you know, process outlined in the Land Use Code can appeal a zoning administrator decision, but if I don't extend that, then you won't have the opportunity to. So I just wanted to let you know about that.
And at what point will we have details of the project so we can review and prepare?
Well, if you want to, you can look on the zoning administrator agenda and review the materials. They're on there now. And we'll provide you a very brief staff report with a link to that agenda for your May 14 hearing. And the only question will be, do you want to take this up as an appeal?
Not the appeal itself, but do we want to?
Not the appeal itself, yeah.
Okay. Thanks for the heads up.
What would the process be? Would we, if we formally appealed, what would happen?
Then staff would bring the appeal hearing to the planning commission and you'd be able to, you have three options on appeal. You can affirm the decision of the zoning administrator. If you're planning to affirm the decision of the zoning administrator, I would strongly encourage you to reject the opportunity to appeal it. You can affirm in part, so you can change what we said, or you can deny the project. You can actually reverse, reverse a decision.
So just to be clear, we would be choosing to then elevate it to an appeal to ourselves?
Yes. If you wanted to appeal my decision. And what that does for the public?
So, sorry, we'd have the same power that a citizen would in this scenario, correct? A citizen?
You always, you always do, but because of the timeline here, you wouldn't have the opportunity to, to take that appeal up.
I understand. So before our next meeting, review that and we can all come to a decision as to whether we want to see it further in the appeal.
Correct.
Turn four.
I would further kind of just say, anytime there's a zoning administrator hearing, you have the opportunity to appeal those decisions and they're all on this website as well. So it's just not, you know, this particular one, it's any action the zoning administrator has taken, you have the ability to appeal.
And do those hearings also end up on the city's YouTube channel?
No, they don't. They're, they're not broadcast.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Well, there being no further business, this meeting is adjourned.